Good morning, everyone. Seeing all three commissioners present, I will call to order the November 13th, 2025 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. I will ask Nellie, who matters to lead us in Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we've got a long meeting, sorry, I stunned you. We've got a long meeting today. Try to get through it as quickly as we can, but a lot of important topics to cover. I'll just start by saying, I wanted to recap last week's municipal election. We had an extraordinary turnout for an odd year, perhaps the highest on record as far as we can go back, which is that 50% registered voters in Montgomery County cast a ballot. That is one of the loops. Go up to the voters in Montgomery County, and also, of course, our voter services staff, who have made it easier than ever to access the ballot, whether you go in by mail, in person at one of our sites, or at the polls. And we already got a glimpse that this was going to be a high turnout election when we saw the mail-in numbers coming in. So more than 90,000 people voted by mail, that was another record total for an odd year election. And to put that in perspective, there were 85,000 applications for mail-in ballots, which we get a portion of those, I think 80% usually. And so we've far exceeded all of our records. I think four years ago, it was about 225,000 voters, this year it's about 310,000 voters. So, big jump in turnout, which really shows that people appreciate that local power matters, whether they're voting for school board, or townships, or any elections, the judicial races, and the Commonwealth, and the state Supreme Court, especially at a time where we are experiencing, during the election, the federal government shutdown, and the state government bill budget, which I'll talk about in a second. It showed that voters appreciate their vote at the local level, and what it means. And so, thanks again to the voter services team, our 428 judges of elections, 2,412 poll workers, the 226 student poll workers, and of course Frank Dean for leading the operation. So, another topic, Small Business Saturday. Speaking of thinking local, you're probably all thinking about your holiday gift giving starting now, it's almost Thanksgiving, and it seems like the Black Friday sales start earlier than earlier, you're getting all the emails already. I just want to encourage folks to think about Small Business Saturday, November 30th, and local businesses here in Montgomery County. We'll share this through our comms team, and give you some ideas on our socials, but it's always great to get a gift locally to support our local economy and small businesses. So, on the state budget, we'll have more comments on this, but I'll just say, it's good to know that we can continue to serve our communities in the way we have been, and I'm very thankful that our team has been able to run the county's finances in such a way that our services were not impacted in Montgomery County, and that's something we can be proud of. Unfortunately, the work counties, we had to close services. Thankfully, the state budget has been passed, it's not a dramatic change from last year. There is an earned income tax credit, which will be a great help to a billion families across the Commonwealth. But we still got to fight for funding mass transit and SEPTA, and also addressing housing affordability, the whole home repairs bill, which was issued years ago, and in my partisan fashion, was not included in this bill, and that's something that I hope to advocate for for next year, as well as public transit funding. And finally, through my comments, this is our last meeting before Thanksgiving, so we wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. There's much to be thankful for in Montgomery County, and we have a lot of residents who are doing incredible work to support. Others throughout the county in need, last Thanksgiving, I was at a Merian Community Cover, they give out thousands of turkeys. We, of course, as a county, invested over half a million dollars directly for food for our food pantries, there's about 70 food pantries across the county, at a time when staff benefits have been in question. And, long-term, you know, adjustments, and they'll be cut, but, you know, we'll have to do everything we can locally at a time when it's unclear the level of support we're getting federally. So I'm thankful for all of our partners with the Monco Anti-Hunger Network, Community Cover, many other food pantries that are supporting families, especially during Thanksgiving. So, that I'll turn over to the comments table for the morning.
Great, thanks Commissioner Mokisha, how's everyone doing this morning? Mr. Morgan, did I see you at the American Delivery last week? I did, I saw you in the crowd, so thank you for being there. Last week, I had the honor of welcoming Pennsylvania's first lady Lori Shapiro to Montgomery County Community College for a special evening, screening a documentary that's close to my heart, American Delivery. It's about the experience of women and healthcare workers around the world, and here in the United States. I was grateful to share the movie with a packed audience, I think we had over 300 people there, including Mr. Morgan, so thank you, and to host an inspiring panel discussion with experts and advocates, including the filmmakers Carolyn Jones and Lisa Frank, State Representative Morgan Cephas, and representatives from the Maternity Care Coalition, Penn Medicine, Lifecycle Wellness, and Birth Centers, and Cherry Gregg from WHYY. American women of color still experience high rates of maternal mortality, and so that's why events like this are so important, so we can address why this happens, and explore how to improve outcomes for moms and babies. This evening of storytelling and discussion brought home the realities of our strained healthcare system, and offered powerful inspiration on the possibilities of how we build networks and communities for new parents who are bringing beautiful babies into the world. I want to thank everyone who came, and to my amazing team for helping us pull this event off. Something else has brought me a lot of hope and inspiration over the last two weeks, is how the community has come together to fill in the SNAP funding gap brought by the federal government in action. As a county, we've stepped up and directly funded a half a million dollars to the Monco Anti-Hunger Network, working quickly to feed our friends and neighbors, and this is how government should work, to support those in need. And so we've seen countless local businesses offer support through meals and food collection efforts, along with many local organizations and community leaders. So I want to thank everyone who has stepped up in this moment, whether you gave supplies, offer a meal, or donations at this time. That's Mr. Rogers oftentimes talked about, look for the helpers, and we've seen a lot of helpers over the last couple of weeks. If you'd like to help, there's still need. I want to remind you that our winter collection drive is still going on. Our emergency food drive runs through December 31st, and we're collecting non-perishable foods such as cereal, oatmeal, and canned meals. Drop-off locations are available via our website, and our website also has details about our winter coat drive, holiday tour drive, toy drive, and our Thanksgiving food drive. So thanks to all that have stepped up in this time. We know that Thanksgiving is just a couple of weeks away, and I just did a turkey in disguise project with my five-year-old. Does anybody know what that actually is? Megan knows what that is. So you basically have to, they send home a turkey, and then you have to disguise it as something. So Max, Kevin, and I did our turkey in disguise project, which is due on Friday, and we disguised our turkey as a bucket of popcorn, so it's really cute. But November is a time for me to reflect on the work that we've been tasked to do, and every day I see the work our employees are doing, in public safety, food security, immigrant support. You all are doing the real work, and amazing work, and I'm grateful to have such great colleagues across the county. And although we are sitting here on the dais as commissioners, we are just simply here to represent you, to carry your stories, and make sure people know the difference that all of our county employees and community are making every day. So in the spirit of Thanksgiving, I want to extend my gratitude to our teams and all the residents of Montgomery County. This is a great community, and I'm proud to be part of that. That's it for me.
Good morning, everyone. I can't believe we're already almost halfway through November. I'm still trying to figure out what happened for October. Time is flying, but as we know, this past week was Veterans Day, November 11th. Actually, Veterans is not just, November is just not Veterans Day, but it's Veterans Month. So let's not pass up the chance to continue to recognize all our veterans throughout the month of November, and beyond. I always like to promote the fact that we should be recognizing, thanking, and appreciating our veterans every day of every month of every year. We're glad to re-raise the flag again this year at the courthouse. It was a great attendance, we had many veterans there, we had a lot of our state representatives were there, some of our county elected officials. It was a good, cool fall day, but we did raise the flag, and we did only go to half-mast because of Vice President McCain passing away, no, McCain, Cheney. It's been a long week. So we all know that we owe our veterans a ton, a ton, and please, as I said, make sure that we thank them. Saturday before Thanksgiving is observed each year as National Adoption Day. It's a great opportunity to encourage adoption in our community, and honor the families who have welcomed an adopted child into their homes. Next Friday, the county courts, Orphans Court Administration, and Office of Children and Youth will be celebrating the adoption of five local children from foster care. There are so many children that need a loving family, so if you have the means in the heart, please consider being an adopted parent. So we're really proud to work with our dedicated team in OCY, and our Orphans Court. We attended the event last year, and just watching the joy in the five families that adopted these kids was just a great honor to be part of. Also, yesterday, I don't know if you all saw on the news or not, but the last penny went into production. I had the opportunity, I was invited down to the Mint by Treasurer Beach, and I got to basically participate in all the day's activities surrounding. We were, they brought five penny blanks, they called the blanks, and they brought them to the press, and we went through one penny at a time, making the last penny of our lifetime and forgot to go on. Believe it or not, I mean, this is very important for everyone to know, pennies aren't going away, they still will be used for many, many years. Believe it or not, that there's over 300 billion pennies out there somewhere. Maybe in a piggy bank in a drawer in your house, I'm sure we see pennies along the street all the time. So next time you see that penny on the street when you're walking by or on the sidewalk, pick it up, because that's one of 300 billion pennies that are out there in circulation. But it was actually fun to be part of history, and I got the opportunity to hold the last penny that will be made, so it was actually a fun day. And finally, I have the honor of introducing our Way to Go winners for the month of November. If you could see them up on the board there. Fortunately, none of them were able to make it here today, they're very busy at work. I can't imagine why they wouldn't want to be at a commissioners' meeting, but we're grateful for everything that they do. Our county employees are recognized by their peers for their outstanding work, so we want to congratulate our list of November Way to Go winners, Monco winners. That's all I got.
Thank you. So what's going to happen to Lincoln? He gets a new coin.
Well, maybe you never know, maybe he'll invent a three cent.
All right, so next, we will move on, we're going to hear from our Recorder of Deeds on Veterans Resource Fair, on the fair.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Monna, thank you so much for giving me this time. I'll let you know that I have wrote a note to myself to slow down, because I do speak fast, but hopefully if I speed up, you'll just ignore this speed and just catch up with me. I want to especially thank you for having me here this month as we celebrate veterans. It's a very special time in the Recorder of Deeds office. Not only is the Recorder of Deeds doesn't just do deeds, in the 1850s, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania gave us the great honor of recording veterans' discharge papers. These documents not only show military service, but they also prove what benefits the veteran and the veteran's family deserve. This is why it is so very important that veterans get these documents recorded. To encourage veterans to record these papers, we have a very popular veterans' discount ID program. Over 650 businesses in Montgomery County participate, giving discounts all year round, not just in November. Any business who would like to celebrate our veterans are welcome to join at no charge. But let's be honest, the veterans really are not the only ones who benefit from this program. We happen to love seeing our veterans at these. This particular picture is at our last Veterans Resource Fair in October, and that is Kathy. She is from the Women's War Memorial Arlington Cemetery, and she is there to sign up women veterans. She's always got lots of great information there, I love talking with her and all the other veterans. We're also very lucky in Monco to have so many World War II veterans with us, hitting that century mark this decade, like our very own Bobby Shantz, Army veteran from Ambler. However, with this age, came a little bit of an issue with veterans' documents in Pennsylvania. So I was very happy to be able to work with Representative Joe Webster and his amazing team to get past House Bill 269, which will protect veterans' documents and veterans' privacy much longer than what we had had. It's also time for very, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry here. I forgot that Veterans Month is not over, I'm so sorry. We have a number of events still coming up this month and the rest of this year for veterans to come to. Some are veterans' discount ID card events, and some are breakfasts. We invite veterans to go to our website and find them, and we also, as you can see from this picture, love it when veterans bring us pictures from when they first went into service. I often say they look like babies, with some of those first pictures when they're 18 or 17 going into service, they're absolutely wonderful. I enjoy it when we see those from our veterans. It's also time for our very successful holiday drive for the Veterans Multi-Service Center. Veterans Multi-Service Center works with veterans in the region. They're again requesting small toiletries, hats, shirts, gloves, and laundry pods, et cetera. People can drop those off at my office, or what has become very popular, and we very much encourage, is people order them online and have these items actually shipped straight to my office. It makes it so much easier for everybody, we absolutely love it, encourage people if they would like to do it that way. We also have many organizations and businesses that will help us with the collection drops. If you have a business, or organization, or an office, and you'd like to be a drop spot, please just let us know, we'll make sure you're part of that list. And you can see from these pictures, the one over there on the left, that was last year's delivery to the Veterans Multi-Service Center. Completely filled, my minivan, which is one of the largest size minivans out there, seats down completely packed, and one of the county SUVs. We're so delighted to bring all those things, and the generosity in this county is just astounding towards our veterans. It really makes us feel wonderful to be able to deliver that from all the donors in Montgomery County. So if you would like to donate, or be a drop point, please let us know. We also have a brand-new initiative this year, you can call it our Passion Project. Each year, with our veteran services, we go to many veterans' monuments throughout the county honoring our veterans, and we thought other people would like to know about them. So with a huge thanks to LeAnn Pettit from my office, who conceived and designed a Montgomery County Veterans Trail. This is kind of what it looks like, and I want to give another huge shout-out and thanks to the great people at the print shop who worked with us to create not your ordinary little trifle, but this beautiful piece here, absolutely gorgeous. You can pick it up in my office, Diana will be distributing one to everyone up there. And it gives you, it's a list of all the veterans' monuments in the county, so that you can take your fall visit, you're out there watching, you're out there looking at the trees this fall, go take a ride through it, and visit some of our monuments, it's very meaningful. You don't have to get a paper copy, though, we do have an interactive map online, scan that there, and you can go straight to it. If you would like a copy, we will also have copies in the back here and in my office. Again, we love November, because we get to reconnect with so many of our veterans, so I thank you so much for giving me a small moment of time to tell you what we've been working on.
Thank you so much for your work, and for your office's work. Any questions? Thank you.
Was that slowed down?
I'm sorry, I do have a joke. Many of you know I grew up in Minnesota, and each year Minnesotans are rated as the fastest talkers in the country. So, that and growing up on the largest helium deposit in the entire country. Thank you so much.
Thank you, great information.
Okay, are there any public comments relating to today's votes?
Morning, Commissioner, from David Morgan from Ambler, and if you turn to page three of your agenda, B9, that topic is the hydro project exploration, initial, looking at that, and it's $400,000 of our money being spent, proposed to be spent, and then we have already had $600,000. I wonder if the $600,000 is showing that it's a hopeful project, that would be the county to do it? Perhaps the county should consider private corporation doing this, because of the way costs can mount over years. And also, the page five, Justice Center, the top of the page, there's Skidmore, Hollings and Merrill, looks like it's going to go from 31 to 33 million dollars, that's 2 million there, and it seems that the design keeps going in a cycle onward for this project and mounting, and the project, as I mentioned, has historically been capped at about 415 million, and I did produce for Commissioner DeBello a newspaper article about that from the reporter, and so, we on track. We had one presentation in the spring, and we haven't had any follow-up on this center overview, and all the county campuses, between all the buildings, this building across the street, the traditional courthouse, and all of these that we know transparent views of how they're designed and how much more is to be spent. And then, I think we need also, in terms of today's budget talk, and all the spending, time to respond to the fact that the federal government just reopened, and the state government has just had a solution. So how, I wonder our finance department chair, how he's doing with all this quick change that's happening, maybe we might need another meeting, maybe at the end of November, to really know what's going on in terms of reimbursements and all that. Also, we could look into walking down to maybe the highest regional salaries in the area, maybe bring them down a percentage point or something like that. A 401K plan was mentioned by Speaker Vince last meeting, for new employees, instead of a pension. A state, let's state the actual percent increase when the presentation is done. Sometimes you get a mill difference lately, is it for line A of your tax bill coming in the spring for the county? Is it going to change from our recent 13% hike to a 9.69% hike to what percent? So that would really be good to know, as citizens, to know the percent increase in our tax bill coming this spring of 2026. And last thing I would like to say is that Commissioner DeBello had a packet in front of him, looks like it's perhaps a, it looks like a traditional writing, so I'm not sure if that's available today for us to see, the capital budget and the conventional budget in writing today, is that available on the table or anywhere?
We all have the same stuff. No, we all have the same. I just usually have a computer, but I have technical difficulties this morning.
I look forward.
We'll have copies. Any other comments? Thank you.
No, no other comments.
Okay. All right, moving on to approval of the minutes, is there a motion to approve the October 23rd, 2025 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting?
It's moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. So, second, I invite Mr. DeBello, any board comment? All in favor?
Hi.
All right, the minutes are approved. Okay, next, we're going to hear about the advertisement of the proposed 2026 budget. We'll hear from Dean Dortone, our CFO, as well as Stephanie Tipton, our Deputy COO.
Good morning, everyone, I'm Stephanie Tipton, Deputy Chief Operating Officer, I'm joined by Dean Dortone, our Chief Financial Officer, and today, we are here to present Montgomery County's proposed 2026 budget. So, let's start with a quick overview of our budget process. This budget is the result of months of collaboration across departments, with a constant focus on how every dollar is spent, and how we can best serve the residents of Montgomery County, especially in these challenging times. And after today's presentation, there will be opportunities for public feedback. We encourage everyone to participate in the upcoming budget hearings, which will be held on December 4th, 4th, at either 10:00 a.m. or 5:30 p.m., and at the Board of Commissioners meeting on December 18th, where the board will take its final vote on the proposed budget. And for those who want to dig deeper, the full proposed budget details are available online at montgomerycountypa.gov/finance, and we invite you to review the budget book and all the supporting materials. So, Montgomery County, as I think many of us know, is truly a community of choice. We are growing, vibrant county, we're home to people of all backgrounds, experiences, and socioeconomic levels. More people are choosing to live and work here than in any other collar county. Over the past 15 years, our population has grown by 7.1%, matching Chester County and outpacing Philadelphia, Bucks, and Delaware Counties. Today, we have the largest population outside of Philadelphia, over 879,000 residents, and projections show we will reach nearly 943,000 residents by 2050. Our community is diverse and highly educated, 55.4% of our residents hold a bachelor's degree or higher, and about 100,000 residents were born outside of the U.S. Employment is also growing at nearly 1% per year, faster than population growth. Next slide, please. But we also know that many households in Montgomery County are feeling the impact of rising costs, just as the county is. The average household income is a little over 106,000, and the average home price has reached a little over 556,000, an increase of 21.8% from last year. It's not just housing costs that are rising, healthcare and utilities are more expensive, and these changes affect all of us. are more expensive, and there, and these changes affect all of us, residents and local government alike. Homelessness is also on the rise with a 14% increase in unhoused individuals from the previous year. We recognize these challenges, and as we work through the budget, we are focused on balancing fiscal responsibility with the need to support Monco communities. Next slide, please. As costs rise, so does the demand for county services. For example, in recent years, we've seen the number of individuals receiving behavioral health services and homelessness assistance increase by 58%. And as a county, we've stepped up to meet these growing challenges head on, ensuring our friends and neighbors receive the support they deserve during these challenging times. Next slide, please. So most people, when they think about their taxes, don't realize that the largest share goes to the federal and state government. The average Montgomery County homeowner pays just over 8,000 in property taxes, but only 936, just about 12% goes to the county. Despite this limited share, the county does a lot, and we're doing even more every year, which we'll talk more about later on in the presentation, despite limited options for generating new revenue. Um, you can go to the next slide, and I'll hand it over to Dean to talk about the numbers.
Stephanie, before Dean jumps, as we're walking up to the mic, the one slide that the growing demands, um, I think it's important to point out, you mentioned about the, I think you said 11% increase in the 911 calls?
Yes.
Um, I, I want to, the, the, a lot of that funding, 911 basically comes from the cell, from the phone bills, or cellphone bills, or all phone bills, right? So there's basically 911 tax incorporated into the bill.
Right.
The, what we need to understand is, is that our 911 costs are growing, but the actual funding that we're getting from the state isn't. So as a county, we're forced to provide the difference, uh, uh, you know, to cover their growing expenses. And then when you talk about 11% increase in 911 calls, that translates to a high number. So, um, I know Dean's going to talk about at one point about unfunded mandates that the state loves to put onto counties. And then this is just one of them where the the actual monies that we're receiving from the state doesn't have to cover the 911 expenses.
Yeah, that's a great point.
That's an interesting slide. I, most property owners probably don't realize that 75% of their real estate taxes that are paid go to school district services. But I'm going to talk to you about the 12% today. Next slide. So I'm going to start off by um going over where we are in our projections. Typically, you know, at this time of year, um, you know, we've got at least nine months of actuals that that are booked and closed out. Um, so we feel comfortable about, you know, where our revenue and expenses are. And, you know, I've been reporting out, um, throughout the year about some of the trends, and many of them have continued and will, and they're in the forecast. Um, the good news is that, you know, we came into this budget year 2025, um, projecting a deficit of about 16 million. Um, however, better performance on the revenue side, combination on the expense side too. Um, you can see that we're projecting about 13.8 million in new revenue over the budget. Um, and then expenses are projected about 2 million higher. Um, some of the the numbers that are embedded in the higher expense are grant funded services, so higher grant revenue in the 13.8, and then some higher expense. But all in all, um, instead of the budget deficit of about 16 million, we're projecting, um, an actual deficit of about 4 million, which is good news because the plan was that we were going to draw down on unassigned fund balance to fund that budget gap. Um, but based on these early, or these budget projections here, um, it's looking like we are drawing down and be in the $4 million range. Next slide, please. So I'm going to turn to the 2026 proposed budget. And, um, it has been a challenging budget. We knew that coming into this year. Um, we started out very early in the season, uh, in the spring. Um, our departments, um, all evaluated their budgets for cost containment opportunities, which, um, many have been implemented or are in this proposed budget that we've put forward. But some of the main cost drivers, and some of these are things that are unavoidable. Um, one of the biggest cost drivers is obviously in personnel cost. You can see that 19 million. Um, I will point out, healthcare, right? We've experienced double-digit increases from healthcare, and most of it's driven by the cost of healthcare, providing the services besides utilization. Um, so that is, uh, has been a challenge um in the last 18 to 24 months, but we've taken some steps to contain some of that. And I'll explain that in the slides ahead. Um, our debt service for the capital improvement plan, as you know, uh, we had a new money bond issue that we completed this year. Uh, the fund capital plan, we still have about 90 million of bond proceeds that will carry over into the new year. Um, that'll be used to fund, continue to fund the plan. But we have about 3.6 million of new debt service, uh, that's embedded in the 26 budget that is anticipated. Some of the newer costs, um, in our housing priorities and supportive housing, about 5.3 million to support that major initiative. Um, much of that had, has begun this year. Uh, it's partially funded by other funding sources, um, at the moment. And, uh, next year it will be included in the, um, full 2026 budget with some offsets. Um, but this next number is, is really the more compelling number. And, you know, we have contractual costs that, you know, these are contracts, multi-year contracts that are in place, and they have inflationary cost increases. Besides the normal cost, you know, inflationary cost increases that you would expect, whether it's in utilities or fuels or things like that, food. Um, so we have that, um, and we were experiencing, experiencing in it. A good example of that is, you know, with our correctional facility, we are, you know, are mandated to provide medical services for the inmates. Um, that's a multi-year contract that alone adds about a half a million dollars of new expense in the 26 budget that's unavoidable. Um, and again, unfunded state and federal mandates. Commissioner DeBello made a good point on, you know, about the 911 fund. Um, in past years, um, the the revenues that came in were sufficient to cover the expenses. Some years we had to subsidize from the general fund, but at the moment, it appears that, you know, the way the fees are set up, the structure at the state level, uh, it's not going to support our expenses ongoing. And there will be a general fund subsidy in the years ahead. Next slide, please. So we're going to talk in more detail about how the budget is balanced for 26 as it's been proposed of, you know, just high level, very simple, right? We talked about cost containment. That's been ongoing throughout this year. Um, many of the initiatives, uh, that the departments put forward are carrying, um, have been implemented and will, you know, carry forward to 2026. That's a piece of it. Um, we will need new revenue to balance the budget. Um, and then we're also, as we have done in the past, and it's consistent with our budgetary practices, the utilization of unassigned fund balance at a certain level. That'll give us a balanced budget in 2026. So just a bit of a recap, when we started earlier in the year, and, you know, when you model out, you know, in the first quarter of the year, you don't have a lot of experience on your revenue expenditure side of, you know, what's really going on. But you make some assumptions. And we did that, um, in early in the year. We were projecting a deficit about of about 55.9 million. Um, but moving forward, um, as we implemented different strategies and negotiated renegotiated contracts, we're able to achieve about 14 million in operating savings. We're going to be using about 12 million of restricted fund balance for certain expenses and then unrestricted fund balance as well. We have some revenue performance and improvement in certain categories. Um, as you know, we're limited with general fund revenues, about 54% of it comes from real estate tax revenue. But we do have a few smaller categories that are increasing, and that's a good sign. So, you know, with all that, it leaves us with a deficit of about 25, 25 million before we do anything. Talked about, um, some of the, um, cost containment strategies and things that have been implemented. So, you know, reducing that deficit, you know, included benefit cost reductions, healthcare benefit, uh, healthcare and and other benefit cost reductions. In this number is, um, you know, probably about 1.4 million of renegotiated uh prescription plan savings that we were able to achieve going out to the market on a multi-year contract, uh, that was negotiated this year and will be, um, implemented as of January 1st, 2026. So that's, that's a savings. But on top of that, we still have the, you know, the cost increases, um, from, you know, healthcare in general for the services. Um, operating costs, uh, we've been able to achieve savings in various areas. Uh, so with that, um, you know, we have some specific things that, you know, I'll note here that are clearly, you know, great opportunities for us. One of them is, you know, our workers' comp claim management. We take care of that in-house with our solicitor's office. They do a great job. Um, we're able to save about 800,000 in the budget in 2026 because of the claim experience has been excellent in the last couple of years. Um, so it's things like that that add to the, to the budget and, you know, help us reduce the deficit. Um, we're also, um, proposing in the budget to eliminate 11 full-time equivalent positions um in various departments. That's going to achieve about 700,000. Um, and then legal fee reductions, um, this is almost a half a million dollars. As you know, our solicitor's office handles a lot of the the legal work in-house now for us. Um, so we're able to reduce the budget by almost a half a million dollars there. So these all have helped us to achieve almost 14 million in savings on a budget-to-budget basis. Next slide. So before we do anything about adding any new revenue, um, the projected overall revenues for the general fund are about 670 million. And now you see the expense side, 632. That leaves us with a deficit of about 25, 25 million. The proposal that we're putting forward is to close that gap. And the way we're going to do it is we're going to raise, um, the millage rate to 5.462, the real estate tax millage rate. Um, that will generate an estimated $12 million in net new revenue. And then consistently with what we have done in the past, on a budgetary basis, we would plan a drawdown of unassigned fund balance of about 13.5 million. That's lower than the number we had planned for, uh, in the 2025 budget. If everything works out and, you know, the numbers at the end of the year at 26, um, come in the way we project, our remaining, um, fund balance reserves that are unassigned will be about 141 million. That's 23% of the overall revenue in the budget. It's above our fund balance policy range, which is 18 to 20%. But I'll note that 23% is well below what a AAA rate in the community is, um, across the country. Median's in the 34, 35% range. So this is an area Moody's is always looking at. We manage well with the fund balance policy. We've managed our fund balance really well over the last four or five years. Next slide. So how would this impact the, um, average single-family dwelling or property? Um, it's approximately an increase of $36 a year from 2005 to 2006. And this is a, an average single-family dwelling with a market value of about 560,000. Um, however, the assessed value is, is really what the millages apply to. So really, the assessed value is about 171 million, or 171,000. So that, um, assessed value goes back to 1998 when the county last reassessed. So there is a factor that converts at the market, and that's what a typical, uh, market value would be in the county. Next slide, please. So with the new revenue, um, added, uh, we're projecting about 79 million overall revenue. Um, that, when you look at this pie chart here, about 54% of it's coming from real estate tax revenue, and then another 34% from grant revenue. The grant revenue is primarily offset by, um, mandatory expenses, health and human services, things like that on the expense side. Then a very small piece, departmental fees, earnings, um, is spread out across the organization. I will say on that point, um, a number of our rural offices and departments have proposed fee increases. Some have already been implemented in this quarter and will carry over to next year and are embedded in the budget as proposed. Next slide, please. Uh, on the expense side, um, you can see the overall breakdown by our major, major functional areas, um, health and human services, as I noted, you know, with our grant funding being about 34%. That's one of our larger expenses in the general fund at 37%. Most of their expense is covered by grant funding, but there is a county match through all the HHS offices. One thing I would note here, debt service at 11.6%, that is, um, has been noted by Moody's, and that percentage of our overall budget is a little bit lower than, um, what other AAA's are. So that's a really good benchmark for us. It's been consistent in recent years. Um, and you can see, uh, our judicial system, you know, which is the second highest expense, um, you know, is about 18%. That's everything in the courts related to courts.
That's, that includes the, the DA's office, judicial correct? Where is that?
Yes.
Okay. It's, yeah, it's just a little bit confusing. Public safety seems much smaller, but it's actually.
What's that?
Public safety is much more than 2%, right?
Oh, yeah, public safety, yeah. So remember, public safety, 911 is its own fund. So public safety is just the other departments there, um, like the administration and so, so forth. Okay, so, uh, I'm going to turn to the five-year capital plan now. Um, and as proposed, the, um, just give me a second here, catching up. The capital, um, improvement program for 2026, uh, is projected at about 256 million. Um, you can see the way that we fund this plan. It's, it's primarily funded through, um, bond proceeds. However, you, you know, federal and state grant, that's probably about 44 million, I think, of the overall budget here. And, um, you know, we typically leverage the federal and state grant funding on capital projects. We have some projects that are being 100% funded, and, you know, others that have a small county match. Um, and a lot of it is in roads and bridges, but we also have it, you know, within our trail projects and so forth. So I will note here, though, as I mentioned earlier, um, we have about 90 million in bond proceeds on hand, which is going to carry over and will fund the capital plan at least through, you know, the first, you know, five to six months. Um, and then, you know, we'll prepare for another bond issue later in the year. Next slide, please. Um, so what you're, what you're seeing here is just, um, the expenses by major program area. Um, the county campus plan is primarily the Justice Center project, which, you know, has been ongoing. Um, we'll be moving into, you know, the completion of phase two this year, and then phase three will begin in 2026, I'm sorry, next year. Um, and that's embedded into the five-year plan and the 26 budget. Um, in assets and infrastructure, this, this is comprised of roads and bridges, parks, all of those roll up into asset and infrastructures. So that's why you see a higher percentage here, um, on the asset and infrastructure side. Next slide, please. So just, um, you know, turning to the 26 plan, these are two of the major projects, um, that are in 2026 budget. Um, the Justice Center, as I mentioned, um, you know, there'll, there'll be the completion of the phase two and then commencement of phase three. There's about 54 million programmed into 2026. And then for the five-year period for the Justice Center, it's about 190 million on a budget basis. Um, the library, which is a really exciting project that, um, you know, we're hoping will get underway, um, in Q1 of next year, Q2 timeframe. Uh, we have roughly about 39 million programmed in for that construction to begin. Um, and that's for 26 over the five-year, which would just be, you know, 26, 27 to complete it. It's roughly about 59.4 million. Um, and that does not include, um, any other funding sources that might come about. We have some grant applications in, um, that could change, you know, the funding of this project overall. Next slide, please. So the roads and bridges program, which is a big component of, of the capital plan, um, you know, just a little history, uh, back in 17, when the commissioners implemented the, um, $5 vehicle registration fee. At that time, you know, the county's 131 bridges, we had many distressed bridges, um, a lot of them closed. And, you know, we've come a long way. Um, and we did have that dedicated funding, funding source, the $5 fee to cover, uh, debt service on bond service on bond issues, which covered all the expense on these projects. We continue with the program, but, you know, it's, it's shrinking as each year goes on. However, we do have it built in to the capital plan, and there's been many successes here for the money that's been invested over the last five to six years. Open space and parks, you know, big piece of the, the capital budget. You'll see in the planning section of the details in the capital budget, some of the individual projects. We have the Trail Junction Center project that's underway and, and, you know, a lot of nice additions to the whole park system. And, you know, it's interesting, when you look, you look at that slide, you know, the seventy-five percent, the twelve, and the twelve, you know, not everybody knows, you know, that the trails, the open space, you know, is it municipal or is it county, right? So we're responsible for all that, that's under the county umbrella and is part of our twelve percent or twelve cents. Next slide, please. Okay, so I'm going to transition to the community college. Next slide, please. So the county, you know, back in two thousand and seventeen established a dedicated millage rate to fund the community college. The county has provided funding to the community college way back when, right? And basically, the Pennsylvania Community College Act of nineteen sixty-three provides guidance on the shared responsibility of a community college and how it should be funded. And what it states is that the state provides funding, the local sponsors like ourselves, and then tuition and fees, which is the student side of it. When, when you look at the act, you know, it was always anticipated or recommended that the funding should be a third, a third, and a third. This is how it looks today, based on 2025 funding for the community college. You can see that fifty-six percent of their funding comes from tuition. The twenty percent is our local match, and then the twenty-four percent is what the state is providing. So it's not quite a third, third, and third, and we're not near, you know, the state, the state level of twenty-four percent. So what's being proposed, and this, this rate has remained unchanged since it was established in two, uh, twenty seventeen. We're proposing to increase the millage rate to point four-nine mils from point three-nine. That would generate about six point new, six point two million dollars of new revenue dedicated for the community college. So their budget would be approximately thirty million dollars of funding from Montgomery County. This would increase the average single-family dwelling property bill by about seventeen dollars a year, twenty-five to twenty-six. But the most important thing is that it's going to provide stable tuition for the community college students for the next three years. The community college, with the additional funding, as long as the state maintains their level or more, will be able to keep the tuition rates at levels that they're experiencing now. Next slide, please. All right. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to Stephanie, and I'm happy to come back up and answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Dean. Now, I have the opportunity to highlight the parts of the budget that embody, I think, what matters the most to us. Some of our strategic investments that are proposed for FY26. The investments I'm about to spotlight advance the county's strategic pillars, and most importantly, are a direct reflection of our shared values and aspirations for Montgomery County's future. Next slide. So we are committed to building livable and sustainable neighborhoods where families can thrive and communities can flourish. Next slide. So for example, our investments this, in the proposed budget include supporting our housing blueprint, our housing blueprint, which are strategies to improve affordable housing. We're especially focused on short-term transitional housing and helping our friends and neighbors who need it most. We're providing grants to municipalities to help create connected communities. And we're investing, as Dean mentioned, in our parks and trails, which saw over three million visitors last year. Next slide. Also focused on policies that support working families and pioneer opportunities that set standards for the region and Commonwealth. Through the Monco Main Streets program, we're creating economic opportunities across the county. We're exploring renewable energy sources, as you heard today, like the Norristown Dam hydroelectric project. And as you heard, we're also investing in the community college to make it, to make sure that our entire community has the opportunity to affordably continue their education and strengthen our future workforce. Next slide. And public safety is a top priority for the county. We're ensuring swift response times and equitable access to safety and justice for all of our residents. We're increasing funding for our district attorney and public defender. We're continuing our supportive programs like the UK Panel and investing in cutting-edge technology. We're also assisting first responders in purchasing new radios for improved emergency communication. And we're fulfilling critical state laws enacted by the General Assembly, even though those mandates do not come with funding, as we talked about earlier. And finally, we're committed to improving how government works, so strengthening processes, streamlining those, strengthening accountability, and ensuring public resources are used wisely. So we will be investing in new technologies to help our elections run even more efficiently. We're also implementing key performance indicators to ensure we're working efficiently and with public accountability. And lastly, we are making Montgomery County a great place to work by supporting our dedicated workforce and setting the standard for employers across the region. Next slide. I encourage everyone to check out the Budget Book online, visit our website, and give us feedback on the budget. New this year, in addition to our budget hearings, the public can provide feedback from the comfort of their homes and at a time most convenient to them through our Engage Monco platform, which you'll always, you will also find linked on the finance website. Your input is vital to us as we work together to build a stronger, more resilient Montgomery County. Okay? Thank you, and happy to answer questions.
All right. Well, first, let me just say, this has been months and months of hard work. So, you know, if you notice, like bluntly, we started this in a very different places, as Dean pointed out, with a fifty-five million dollar deficit, double-digit tax increase. But it's because of the work of our county team, Lee, Soltiz, Zach, Garcia, Stephanie, Tiffany, and Artic, and Dean, Dertone, all the meetings that you've had have got us to a place where we have found significant savings. Fifty million alone, that is not an easy thing to do. We started in low single digits when the conversations began, but, you know, we're resourceful, creative, and really put in the work to, to find every way that we could possibly, you know, save. And I just want to pause there and ask everyone on the team to acknowledge and to thank them for their hard work and making this happen. So, you know, like so many families and businesses across Montgomery County, the county is, of course, witnessing the impact of inflation and rising costs. And it's important to note that the biggest cost driver for our county and, and most local governments and institutions is really the cost of healthcare alone. So that increased eighteen percent over the past two years. And certainly, people are seeing that in all different settings as it relates to healthcare. This year, our healthcare plans cost ten percent more than we anticipated. And, you know, that's in part due to national trends. There are also, you know, new laws that have passed in Harrisburg that required implementation that came without funding, so we're following the law, and that also increased costs. But overall, I think this is, you know, an extraordinary result and proposal where, you know, thanks to our initiative with the Office of Innovation and Strategic Performance, we've really added a level of sophistication to the budget, including how we evaluate performance, how we're transparent, and make better decisions. So one of those was renegotiating our prescription drug vendor contract to save one point four billion dollars, as Stephanie noted, saving on, or as Dean noted, saving half a billion dollars by bringing legal costs internal, bringing them in-house instead of outsourcing. And we've done all this work and savings so that we can actually make tough, make critical investments that we need to serve the county. So in public safety, we've, we've made seven point two million dollars towards the purchase of new communications equipment. That's going to go to police, fire, and EMS across the county. And as you've seen, the demands are going up on them, but that's a conversation that police chiefs bring up all the time in terms of the need to upgrade their communications equipment. We're finally able to do that with this budget, and it's essentially a way that will also take off, the method we're doing it will take off the burden from localities. So it's an interest-free loan for first responders, so local police departments can get the equipment without having to pay the high costs that it would entail, and to take out a loan to purchase the same thing. So we're helping all of our municipalities in the way that we're, we're functioning here. And I'll just point out two things before I turn it over to my colleagues, which is that I think there's also significant investment that will continue to roll into further savings and efficiencies. Some of that is in specific departments like motor services, but it's also, you know, the OpenCub platform. And we only just began a new contract with, with a cost savings consultant, which is one that will help us review even further in terms of ways we can save. So I think this is really exciting. It's important that we're also making investments in parks and trails that are going to be heavily utilized next year. We already have three billion visitors a year. It's going to be way more next year, so we're prepared on that front, too. But that, I'll turn it over to...
Thank you, Commissioner Mahija. I'd also like to thank our, our county team for all of the hard work. I know you all were here late last night finishing the presentation, but there's incredible work, as, as many of you know, that goes behind the story of our budget. It not only reflects our fiscal responsibility, but also our shared values as, as a county. And it's focused on creating opportunities and building communities where everyone that calls Montgomery County home can thrive. For me, one of my biggest priorities coming in, and I think all of our priorities, has been housing. I believe that everyone that calls Montgomery County home should have a safe place to lay their head at night. And I'm grateful that my colleagues have shown that they also deeply care about this issue. We know that one person sleeping outside is one too many, and homelessness in particular comes in many forms. We know that many families are one paycheck away from ending up on the streets. So it's something that can truly happen to anyone in Montgomery County. So I'm so grateful to our county team for developing a comprehensive housing strategy. And this year alone, we announced the opening of three transitional facilities in Lansdale, Norristown, and Pottstown to provide immediate relief to those that find themselves in need. And I know that we've set aside three point six million dollars in this proposed budget for those facilities, as well as other critical shelter services. But that's just one end of the continuum. We know we have so much more work to do on the housing continuum. Another big priority of mine, we know that behavioral health and mental health is a challenge that so many families face. And in our proposed budget, we have made behavioral health a continued priority and support of our residents. This budget includes funding for our Emergency Behavioral Health Center. We have announced this initiative together as a board back in the summer of twenty twenty-four, and we're finally at the point where we are doing a groundbreaking on this project this coming Monday at a site in King of Prussia. And so we're investing in this project because it will serve all residents of all ages, children and adults who need crisis intervention, stabilization, and comprehensive mental health or substance support. I know all too well that my family dealt with a fourteen-year journey with my brother, and we oftentimes found ourselves in our local emergency room. So now we're ensuring that families will have a place to go when they're in crisis. So grateful that we've invested in our behavioral health support network. The proposed budget also includes two million dollar investment for our new Monco Main Street strategy led by our Commerce Department. I've spent a lot of time walking through our various main streets, and I do all know there are some main streets that are thriving and others that are struggling. And I believe that this initiative will help to revitalize our main streets across Montgomery County. So these strategies include low-interest loans for businesses in our main streets and commercial quarters, data-driven market analysis to help business owners and developers identify opportunities and fill local needs, and a small business grant program that combines funding with hands-on technical support, ensuring recipients get the tools that they need and training to strengthen their operations and succeed for the long term. And then last but not least, I've always said, you know, when I was running for office, that we're no good to anyone else if we don't invest in our own internal talent. And so I'm so grateful that we prioritize our own county workforce in making Montgomery County, as Stephanie shared, a destination place for people to work and serve. We've done several things over the last year, two years in office. We've raised the starting wage for county employees. We instituted a new paid parental leave, the most generous paid parental leave for the public sector in the Commonwealth. And we've negotiated with our healthcare provider to provide up to fifty thousand dollars in fertility benefits for those looking to start a family. But on top of that, in this budget, we've proposed a three percent base wage increase for all county employees. And so our talent is the lifeblood of our organization, and so we try to find ways to set the standard and ensure that our workforce is supported. So again, thank you to the team for getting us to this point, and I look forward to the feedback on the budget.
Well, you know, again, I, like, like my colleagues, I want to thank everyone that worked on this budget to get us to this point. We started back in, and I brought this up many times, we started all the way back in February, knowing that after we came out of last year's budget, we needed to make significant changes as we rolled into this budget season of the 2026. But I know Dean would be extremely upset if I didn't have him come up to the microphone because I have a few questions. He texted me and said, please, nobody's asking me anything. So as, as Dean's walking up, I do want to highlight something that Commissioner Winder was mentioning. What people didn't quite maybe pick up on is that, as the three of us, when we came in office, you know, homelessness throughout Montgomery County was a huge problem. We know it's been talked about for several years. There's been different initiatives that have been researched, tried, talked about, whatever it may be. And we were, we were actually committed to walking through the neighborhoods and figuring out what we could do. And we started, you know, putting these programs in place with these transitional homes. And people ask and they want the homeless, you know, problem resolved throughout Montgomery County, but unfortunately, it comes with a cost. So, and we're, and we know that to be, we know how, we want to care for these individuals. They're, you know, they're, they're out there for different reasons. We've talked about this many times, but they're out there. And as, as a society, we need to do a weekend to help these people. And that's what we did. And, but it comes with, I mean, we're into millions, we're spending millions. And I forget the actual number for next year, it was like six point seven million or something like that, overall, for transitional housing for these facilities that, that we mentioned. So we're very happy to see where we are because, for instance, in Pottstown, where we opened up this facility, they were seeing over a hundred and fifty people on the street. And since we opened that facility up in Pottstown, the last time I was up there talking with our, our folks at the facility, they believed that it was down to about fifteen or so people that were now on the street up in Pottstown. So we've made a tremendous, tremendous movement to, to helping these individuals, as well as, as you mentioned about the Crisis Center that we're going to be opening up. And it comes with a cost, but it's definitely, as, as, as a county, these, these are things that I feel as, as county commissioners are extremely important for us to do. that I feel as as county commissioners are extremely important for us to do for our communities. But with that, I want to go back to, let's talk about the fifty-five million dollar deficit a bit, um which was a real number, right? And we knew that that we needed to do something. So you hit some, if you want to go back to that slide, if you can, Megan.
The timeline, huh?
Yeah, the fifty, where we say fifty five. Right, oop, there you go. So let's talk about it a little bit because I I think I think this slide's important and we kind of like flew through it. Um let's let's talk about the the fourteen million in operation operating operational savings. Um there was a slide that mentioned a few things, but could we, you know, spend a little bit more time on that slide and get into a little bit more detail about, you know, what made up that fourteen million in in operational savings?
Yeah, so a good a good chunk of it, um you know. We had planned for when we were forecasting and things, right? And you would, right? When you're forecasting early in the year, you you use the best information you have to figure out what twenty-six is looking like. So this is just one example, right? We had anticipated that we would have to do a money bond issue, right, to fund the capital plan that's in front of you today.
Right.
Um we're in a better position in terms of cash flow at this point that we will likely still have to do a bond issue, but it will probably be later in the year, which means that the debt service from it won't kick in until the following year, twenty-seven. We'll still be dealing with that expense, but, you know, it's been delayed, right, or deferred until the future year. So we would have expected that early in the year. At this point, based on our analysis, we're not. That's that's a piece of it. Um we also think that, and you know, I know that the state, you know, has just approved their budget. One of the things that was on the table was to fund the nine-one-one fees at a higher level. Um I don't, I haven't studied this yet, I don't know, but I don't believe that that needed through. I think, though, that we have fund balance capacity in the nine-one-one fund that um and this isn't for good reasons, right? We had twenty-three vacant positions there, nine-one-one operators, which you don't want. There was a point in time that, you know, we were almost fully staffed and then it dropped off again. So there's a lot of turnover there, but we typically save against the budget. So I think that we can get through twenty-six and, you know, we'll know more as we, you know, get into the first six months of the year without having to fully subsidize it. So that's a piece of it. That's about, it's normally, I would say, I would project that we'd have to put two million dollars in there, um but because of the performance and, you know, the budgetary performance, we haven't haven't had to do that. Um and and, you know, there's there's other pieces to it, you know, that, you know, I'm happy to follow up and provide, you know, like if you if you really want to see a detailed list of everything, I can.
No, I I'm just trying to, I I I think it's important um that, you know, as commissioners, we have to make tough decisions, but I think it's important that people understand that uh a lot of thought went into this budget as far as, you know, reducing expenses, um especially as we we see the, you know, the growing rev uh less revenues, but growing expenses that are outside of our our control as far as healthcare uh expenses that we that we're seeing a roughly nine percent increase in health our healthcare costs. Uh so these are all real numbers that are growing, and I I know I mentioned at one of the meetings that our our organic growth per year, what I call organic growth per year is about four percent, just in just in expenses that grow beyond, you know, if we do nothing, this is what these expenses throughout the county are growing. So when you talk about the twelve point two million in the restricted fund balance, you want to just mention what that is?
Yeah, so, I mean, we we have expenses that, you know, are embedded into the budget, some of the shelter costs, right, um that we just talked about. Um they're they're partially funded through various sources, and then uh there's going to be other one-time funding sources that we have available to us for twenty-six to cover the remainder. Um I think the good news is is that we do have other funding sources. But that said, you know, we'll have to deal with it in twenty-seven, you know, it's, you know, and it maybe there'll be other funding sources that, you know, be able to uh be utilized for it then, you know, the the six point seven million that you were referring to, right? But at the moment, we know what we have from the state, you know, what's anticipated for twenty-six, what's committed, but there will be, you know, um a piece of that that's going to have to be funded, you know, by um one-time funding that we have available.
And then the two point nine unrestricted.
Yeah, that's so that's that's basically, you know, trying to get to the net of how, you know, we're going to balance the budget. So unrestricted, it's just using, you know, whatever fund balance, the unassigned primarily, right? That's the unrestricted. And, you know, the revenue performance is the thing I was talking about. There's some of the revenues, like the gaming revenue is is higher than what we expected. It continues to trend up. Um investment income did better in twenty-five than we would have anticipated because of what the feds, you know, the slowing of, you know, increasing rates. But that's, you know, that's a pressure point in the future. We built in some assumptions to the twenty-six budget that the Fed's driven to reduce rates. Um who knows where to land? So that that becomes a little bit of a gap that has to be covered, you know, with the investment income being projected at a lower amount for twenty-six.
And then we made operational cuts this year that equated to a couple million dollars that trend that.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Roll into next year as well.
Yeah, we rebase a lot of the departmental budgets where we can. I mean, it's not, you know, discretionary spending, there's not a lot of it, but good examples of it are like training and, you know, things like that, supplies, materials. Um in those line items across the organization, budget to budget, we have reductions that were mostly coming out of the, you know, cost containment um initiatives that we did earlier in the year and and are now embedded into the budget.
So, I mean, it's it's safe to say that I I I won't, I can't uh comment on prior boards and prior decisions that were made from a budget standpoint, but I know for this year, going to twenty-six, this budget, I mean, I I I'm trying to get across that. We trying to, as the commissioners, we want to be able to demonstrate that we've made tremendous uh modifications through the process, uh made a lot of changes, we made a lot of reductions. Um I mean, we did a lot to get to where we are today that we just didn't accept uh that a but there's a a number that we're going to throw out there and increase taxes and and that's that. I mean, we we've gotten to a really strong point, uh I mean, you know, that we still have to cover um this growth, um but.
Well, and it, you know, not not to interrupt you, but just to stay on this, I I would caution the board too that we've made a lot of cuts, right? And now, in this budget, we've embedded a four million dollar negative appropriation. So we're saying we're going to save four more, four million more against the twenty-six budget. It's a negative appropriation that is normal, you know, in any government entity budget, right? A lot of it comes from, you know, turnover, vacancy, things like that. But it's the combination of, you know, better revenue performance and savings, right, that, you know, we we don't expect coming into a budget year that we're going to spend the budget. We expect that we're going to save against the budget.
Right.
But this will be more challenging because of the cuts that have already been made.
Yes, and it's also going to be challenging as we go into twenty-seven, but there's things that we that we needed to do. I mean, we needed to do as a county. But also, when you look at that dollar bill um that was put up there, twelve cents out of every dollar that individuals are paying on property taxes only is coming to the county, um where our school districts are putting the majority of the burden on property taxes out there. And I'm not questioning what they're doing, I'm not saying, I'm not I'm not saying any of that. I'm just saying that it's important for people to understand that, you know, twelve cents out of every dollar that they pay in property tax, that's what's coming to the county.
I mean, look, the the school districts, that's a micro focus, right? That's their community, that the boards that represent them, they have initiatives. This is more global, right? We're representing a large amount of municipalities.
Right, again, I'm not questioning what the school districts are doing, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying that it's important that uh that we're showing that overall that we're the the probably the smallest piece of 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 the, you know, property taxes that we all pay uh each year, so.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you.
That's it?
Yeah, that's I'm a county federal and state. Um what I have to do is, you might not have this offhand, but for the emergency behavioral health center, can you walk through the funds for that?
We're going to announce it in a few days.
So uh the bulk of that expense in twenty-six is going to be coming um out of the managed care fund, um choices fund, so that is programmed in into that budget that's being proposed. Um again, in the future, there'll be some component that will roll into operating eventually, but yeah, that's in the budget proposal.
But we were also able to get a number of other sources for that funding, correct?
Yeah. There's also a a six million dollar state grant that is part of the startup cost uh in addition to the funds that Dean's talking about, and also a uh a portion of his opioid funding.
Yeah, so that was one of the points I just wanted to make, which is that we're making this happen, and that is another area where we've got a lot of, um, you know, we had a lot of creativity and resourcefulness in terms of finding different ways to make it fun, to get it funded.
What we haven't been able to be created is getting the Justice Center done. Uh but we know that our overruns related to timelines, we're we're it's going to be, we're keeping track of all that, and we will be going to recoup that money as well. It's not that we're tearing a blind eye to it, but uh there's a process and we have to go through it, and unfortunately, we can't just stop. So, you know, so, you know, we got to work through it, but we'll get there.
All right, any other questions?
Well, thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you again. That was very thorough and I think really is an example of what good government looks like, so thank you for your work. All right, so we're going to move on to resolutions and I'll.
Thanks, David.
Oh, right, we got to advertise the, it's our ask a motion. Is there a motion that the proposed budget for Montgomery County fiscal year twenty twenty-six be posted to the county's website and uh shall be made available through print, copy, and inspection and for review by the public?
I'll second that. Oh, so moved, so moved.
Move by Commissioner Winder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner DeBello, any board comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh the motion passes, so budget will be posted. We'll have the two hearings later this month and then uh final vote after that in the subsequent meeting.
December.
December fifth is the two two hearings.
No resumption.
Got it. There's there'll be one in the morning and the evening. Thanks. All right, so with that, we'll move on to resolutions. Um I'll ask Jasmine Leatherberry from Grant's office to present three resolutions.
Good morning. Um today, I am requesting resolutions and or a commitment of match for several grants, four specifically, uh one being the Norristown Public Library. We are requesting um a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar match in addition to we're applying for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so it's like a fifty percent match. Um and this will support the ADA compliance and HVAC system for the Keystone, I mean, for the Norristown Public Library. Um in addition to that, we are currently applying for three LSA grants for from D C E D. Um the first LSA grant is for the Coroner's Office, which we're seeking two hundred and sixty-seven or sixty-six thousand dollars to construct a mausoleum. This will allow the county to respectfully uh respectfully and properly manage a uh access remains. Um a board resolution is required for us to apply, but there is a zero match, so we're not requesting any commitments or funds, just we need a resolution to apply. Um similarly, the second LSA request, no match is required, just need a resolution for the planning commission, which we're seeking one million dollars from D C E D for the construction of a one mile, one one-half mile segment of the Valley Forge Connector Trail in Upper Marion Township. Um again, there's no match requirement, and the full trail will eventually span um approximately three miles connecting the Sk- 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 River Trail, Skuggel, Skuggel Trail, Skuggel River Trail to Chester Valley Trail. It will support economic development and provide a key regional link through the King of Prussia district. And then lastly, we are requesting um a resolution for the LSA grant, again, for the Norristown Library. We're requesting two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars from uh D C E D, and this will support the purchase of three box trucks for the community. Um some of the things that we plan to do with these box trucks are uh provide outreach, um it will support expanded services through partnerships with middle school, increase engagement with senior centers, senior centers, pop-up library events in remote in remote areas, and several other things. So those are the resolutions we need, and then, of course, the match for the Keystone Grant.
Right, thank you. Any questions? All right, so I'll ask, uh is there a motion to approve resolutions one through three as described by Miss Jasmine Leatherberry?
Mr. Chairman, one through four.
One through four, as described by Miss Jasmine Leatherberry.
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Winder. Second by Commissioner DeBello, any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolutions are approved. So all that means Bill is not coming up. Shouldn't happen.
What do you mean?
Bill is the fourth resolution.
Oh, she covered it.
She had, she had.
That's what I'm saying, so he's not coming up. Got it. Um okay, moving on to uh point five, Jesse King joined us, discussed a lease agreement.
Good morning, board members. Before you this morning is a resolution providing authorization for the county to enter a lease agreement with thirty-one forty-seven Easton Road LLC to provide office, uh county office space for county employees displaced during the renovation of the Willow Grove Annex Project. The property is located at thirty-one forty-seven Easton Road in Willow Grove. Um it should be noted that this is in very close proximity to the existing building. It's actually right next door and shares some of the parking facilities. Uh the facility will provide for approximately five thousand four hundred and forty-five square feet of office space split between two different suites. It will provide for operations for adult probation, pro bono, community connections, and a limited capacity for JPO. Um it's also very noteworthy that we were able to locate a facility that has a classroom that would be appropriate for our DUI classroom um operations. That is a big revenue builder for the county. Um in two thousand nineteen, I just checked the numbers, uh that program brought in approximately half a million dollars in revenue to the county. So it was important for this department um to keep that operation moving during the time of construction. Uh we are looking to enter a three-year agreement with a total rental cost of approximately three hundred and four thousand dollars. I respectfully recommend the board approve this resolution, authorizing the proper county officials to execute the necessary documents to enter this lease agreement, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Thank you.
Uh any questions? It was about three hundred, it's three hundred thousand dollars over three years, hundred, about a hundred some a year.
Yes, sir.
Got it, okay. Um I have one question. So I think I think you mentioned it is about seventy-five people, is that right?
It's we we in the original programming, it was parking spaces for approximately seventy-two people that were to be displaced during this. The swing space will not cover all of those employees. There are some employees that will be um pulled back into Norristown in various offices. The new building will support anywhere from seventy to seventy-eight county employees.
Okay, got it. And Dean, what was the number um for the debt service for twelve million?
Uh the additional debt service?
Yeah.
Per year, the budget budget.
Well, per year, what's the number?
Just on the twelve.
On the twelve million for Willow Grove?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
For every million, how much debt service is seven thousand?
Okay. Got it. All right, so it's less than the rent, by thirty thousand, you know what I'm saying? Um, got it. Any other, any questions? All right, is there a motion to approve resolution number five as described by Jesse King, Director of Assets and Infrastructure?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Winder, is there a second? Second by Commissioner DeBello, any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh the motion is approved. Thank you, thank you. Moving on to point six. Moving on to point six, Commissioners' reappointment to the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority, is there a motion to approve appointment as described by in resolution G seven?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello, any board comment?
Do you know who this is?
I know, you should check it out. I can't pronounce it, do you not pronounce that?
I can't pronounce, I'll go on faith, I'll go on faith.
Seems okay.
He's okay.
Seems all right.
He's all right, yeah.
Maybe he'll save trains from catching on fire, so.
Oh, there you go.
And you're talking about me, anyway. In case anyone doesn't figure that out, any, any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion is approved, thank you, my colleagues, they represent us well. Moving on to section seven, Commissioners' appointments to boards, the Board of Managers for the Youth Center, is there a motion to approve appointments as described in resolution G eight?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello, any board comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the appointments are approved. Moving on to the personnel list, Mr. Tony Brew.
Good morning, Commissioners, here in front of you the final copy of the Commission Department's Personnel List. It is a four-page document dated November twelfth, two thousand twenty five, with a timestamp of nine forty five A M. All positions have been, have been reviewed and accounted for for your consideration.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the November thirteenth, twenty twenty five Personnel Presentation as given by Mr. Tony Brew? Moved by Commissioner DeBello, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder, any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to bids and RFPs, is there a motion to approve the advertisement of bids and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit A? Moved by Commissioner DeBello, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder, any board comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the advertisements are approved. Moving on to awards and contract, is there a motion to approve the contract awards, amendments and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello, any board comments?
Really, the only comment I'm gonna make is I'm not really comfortable about the four hundred thousand for the hydro dam, but I'm really excited to see what comes back, so this is, my support of this is dwindling even more and more, but I'm not necessarily buying into it.
Yeah, I think, look, we'll, we'll see, this is the first, we have an RFP for the private sector partner that we just approved and we'll get a assessment. Nice to make some clean energy and, you know, do you want to see Lee plug it in every day?
Well, that's, that's the highlight of the whole project, is Lee running an extension port for Lee.
Yeah.
Job security.
I'm, I'm very excited about this project and as, as, you know, as it is, the dam's already built, right? We have a dam, we just need to, you know, fix, add, add the turbines essentially to make, to generate electricity. So we'll stay closely tuned to how it's, you know, how it's developing and how the technology is changing and, you know, updates to come, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the contracts are approved. Moving on to advertisement of bids and RFPs for the Southeastern PA Task Force, is there a motion to approve the advertisement of bids and RFPs as described on attached Exhibit C? Moved by Commissioner DeBello, any board comments? I'm sorry, any, seconded by Commissioner Winder, please, any board comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the advertisements of bids and RFPs for the task force are approved. Moving on to contracts, is there a motion to approve the contracts, contract awards, amendments and renewals for Southeast PA Regional Task Force on attached Exhibit D? Moved by Commissioner DeBello, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder, any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the awards and contracts are approved. Moving on to general.
Steve, Keith, Steve?
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Stephen Heath and I'm a long-term resident of Cheltenham Township. It's a diverse community whose leadership recently voted to adopt one of the most robust, welcoming immigration resolutions in the county. I thank the Board of Supervisors and the Chief of Police for their commitment and today I want to thank you for your commitment to immigration rights. Thank you for refusing the two eighty seven. Thank you for your immigrant resource center, which assists our documented and undocumented immigrant population. Thank you for limiting cooperation with Immigration and Customs Enforcement to what is required by law. I am a recently retired, M O P E C certified police professional. When I retired in two thousand twenty three, I was head of Criminal Investigations for Suburban Police Department and I was commanding officer of SWAT negotiators for a regional SWAT team. Nineteen seventy nine, I graduated from the Philadelphia Police Academy, yes, I am old. I spent ten years as an urban police officer and then I transitioned to a suburban police department. In both jurisdictions, I witnessed firsthand how immigrant populations lived in the shadows. Both documented and undocumented residents feared police and the government. Crime victims would not come forward to officially report crime out of fear. Most of those folks were hardworking members of our community. Police spent years building trust with our immigrant population to allow them to live out in the shadows without fear of the police or government. All that work is being decimated by the indiscriminate removal operations committed by ICE. Even those who wish to use legal process are fearful of appearing in immigration court. The tactics used by ICE are hard-handed use of force for what in most cases is a civil violation. Let this sit for a while, a civil violation and not a criminal violation. Even if a person arrested is a criminal, there is a process for arrest, adjudication and removal, if appropriate. When ICE moves on, local police and jurisdictions are left with the damage that's done. ICE is not the local police, but the locals are placed under the umbrella of law enforcement. Communities are not left safe. Our police are not safer because of the increased mistrust. Local police are accountable to local jurisdictions. ICE is accountable to the federal government and when they leave, they have little care about the damage that they leave. Years of building our immigrant population and taking it out of the darkness are being destroyed because of fear, distrust.
Thank you for hearing.
Thank you for hearing me, thank you for what you've done so far.
Thank you for your comments and, you know, I'll just say it's, it's hard, it's hurting to me to hear from members of the law enforcement community to speak on the importance of protecting immigrants who, we just had an incident in Norristown, you were talking about, and man, undocumented or not, was murdered, right, or I'm seeing, I mean, all indications would appear to be that, that's what happened and not enough people talk about the fact that immigrants are more likely to be victims of crime, right? And I actually have spoken to a number of police chiefs who have wanted to make clear that they're here to protect communities, to work with communities and they've made exactly the point you do, which is that that trust has been built over time and now we're finding it difficult for people to want to work with law enforcement to provide information on crimes that are being committed because they're afraid of, of what could happen, so this is an important issue. I know Nellie, the Director of Immigrant Affairs, is working closely with law enforcement partners to help them, to work with the community, to ensure we can keep the public safe on all different fronts and having that trust is essential, so thank you for sharing and, you know, I, I, you know, glad you're able to share that with all of us and you should actually, I don't know if you've met Nellie before, but it'd be helpful to.
Thank you for what you've done so far.
Giuseppe Bucci?
Yeah, I'm Giuseppe Bucci, I have no comment.
Okay, moving on, Jim Donald?
Yes, I'm Jim, no comment.
Joe Salas? Joe? Denise Schmidt?
Good morning, I'm Denise Schmidt and I live in Limerick Township and I am here because I am concerned and fearful of ICE's continued presence here in Montgomery County. It alarms me that they're near schools and public areas where families and children are and I want to urge the Commissioners to adopt a welcoming policy. I don't want local resources used to support ICE any more than legally necessary and I'd like to thank you for your work you do for our community.
Ed Moy?
Morning, good morning, hello, thanks for having me, Ed Moy, West Norriton, I'm from West, West Norriton, Pennsylvania. I'd just like to say, first of all, thank you Commissioner DeBello for acknowledging the veterans of which I am one. When I joined the military, I was too young to be drafted into Vietnam, but I joined very soon, soon afterwards and we still were not welcomed, we still didn't feel welcome when we came home. That being said, I, I, I just wanna start with a quote from Ronald Reagan, everyone knows who Ronald Reagan is. He says, "Some people live their entire lifetime and wonder if they've ever made a difference in the world." And the veteran doesn't have that problem. And also, a quote from a, a major brilliant person from, from one of our, our think tanks, I think he went to Stanford University, Charles Barkley? Just kidding, Charles, Charles went to Auburn, went to Auburn University. But he, he says, he says, "Police, fire, teachers and military, everyone else, everyone else's jobs is easy." That's what he said. Now, sir, I, I appreciate all, all your comments, sir, but I beg to differ. I'm a twenty-five-year veteran of the Pennsylvania State Police and I, I have a different take on it. I believe that, well, once you cross into our, our country legally, the, you, the code is, the crime is U S thirteen twenty-five, I believe, and that, and that is not a civil violation. And if, if our local communities, our, our, our local government would assist ICE and adhere to the detainers that are placed, that, that are, that are asked for, that, that are placed on, on these individuals whom seventy percent already have criminal violations on, have already committed crimes, then a lot of violence that is happening out in the streets would, would not be happening. That being said, again, a list of the injuries or the attacks on ICE agents, there was, there was another recent one where so they were, they were boxed in with, with vehicles, when, when ICE caravan was boxing vehicles. There is an app out there now to dox ICE agents as to where they are. They're, they're trying to say that they want, they want to warn these individuals that ICE may be coming for to, to get out of area, but any, any gang member or, or anyone who wanted to harm an ICE agent can easily use that to, to ambush them. Which has already happened, as we know, already happened down in Texas. Speaking of assaults, pedophile and criminally illegal alien assaults ICE agent during arrest. I just wanna say this before I leave. Any nation who treats our security apparatus the way that we do cannot, cannot survive and it won't. And that, that's my professional opinion, thank you.
Thank you for your comment, just for more, if there's more comments on this related topic, please try to keep it related to county business, is what I'll ask for everyone else, go ahead.
Andy LuDuzio?
Well, thank you for the chance to speak today. I want to thank you for what you guys are doing as Commissioners and I also want to thank you for being the leaders of the county as Commissioners. I know in the past, we've had conversations, you know, between attendees, email conversations of, you know, Commissioners can only do, county Commissioners can only do so much and we should be in touch with our local boroughs, townships, law enforcement. And I just want to mention that when we're in these meetings, they're always asking, what are the MOCO Commissioners doing? Are they making a public statement? Are they, you know, making, you know, not a public statement, but are they making deals that are more quiet? Because they're looking to you guys as the leaders that you are. The same with like Bucks in Chester County, I have friends that live there and they're trying to pass similar welcoming initiatives and they're looking here as well. So I just want to affirm, you know, the leaders that you guys are. And I also want to say that this question of welcoming policy or immigration is not pitting immigrants versus law enforcement or the public, oh, I thought I touched something, I'm so sorry. The public versus law enforcement, the issue right now is that agents, ICE agents are out where schoolchildren are. Last week, maybe two weeks ago now, there was a detention in front of schoolchildren, high school and middle school children, this man was thrown to the ground. You know, there's incidents where ICE is about to pepper spray somebody and they see somebody filming and decide to stop doing that. So there's a lot of issues going on right now, including the increased presence of assault rifles on our streets with ICE officers, ATF. And I know some of these, you know, if there's a warrant, marshals and ATF can come, but I just really want to highlight the public safety aspect of this because a lot of these incidents or ICE detentions are happening between the hours of six A M and nine A M and that's when kids are on the streets. They're walking to school, crossing guards, are seeing these kinds of things. So I really want to encourage a welcoming policy or some sort of policy that says, hey, law enforcement, don't cooperate with ICE because if we have law enforcement that are out here taking charge of the community's safety, people are gonna feel a lot better, immigrants, non-immigrants, documented, undocumented, reaching out to public officials and helping keep our community safe. So again, I want to affirm that I'm not pro, you know, I'm not trying to be against any form of police or community safety, but I really want us to think about what kind of community safety we have right now. I thank you for everything that you're doing, I thank you for your leadership and for your time.
Thank you.
Juanita Alubey?
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Juanita, I live in East Norriton and I'm here to speak in strong support of a welcoming resolution in Montgomery County. Montgomery County is the place that I found my community, but what is happening in our county these past months, almost a year now, is something that no community should accept. Right here in our neighborhoods, ICE officers have entrapped people in their cars at six in the morning on their way to work, they pull people from their yards while doing yard work and they take people just trying to get, take care of their families. Every morning I ride the train to work, I'm a behavioral health nurse, so I'm really looking forward to the behavioral health initiatives that are happening here in Montgomery County, so thank you for that. But on the train to work are Latino men heading to their jobs, men who wake up before the sun rises to provide for their families, but when ICE began ramping up its presence, something changed. The men who once stood tall on that platform began to hide. At first, they took shelter under the canopy at the train station, afraid that officers might appear out of nowhere. Then as enforcement grew more aggressive, they began hiding behind the trees in the back lot, terrified to even be seen. And now they don't even come at all. That image of empty spaces where hardworking men once stood has stayed with me because that fear doesn't just remove people from trains, it removes them from communities, from families and from futures. Children in our county have watched masked men break the windows of trucks at seven A M, drag people out and leave shattered glass on the sidewalks next to their homes. Parents have had to explain to their kids why men in masks and casual clothing are taking people away in unmarked cars. They tackle our community members in the front yards of strangers' homes. This is not keeping a community safe, this is trauma, this is fear, this is racial profiling happening right in front of us and it should be unacceptable to every single one of us. The issue is not that immigration is being enforced, immigration laws have always been being enforced. It is the manner in which that they are being enforced. And while I completely understand that you cannot control the federal government, you can't that you cannot control the federal government, you can't decide how Montgomery County responds to it. You can choose whether this county stands for fear or for dignity. A welcoming resolution is not just symbolic, it's a statement of values. It tells our immigrant neighbors that they belong here and deserve safety here, and that we honor their place in our community. Commissioners, I'm asking you to take a stand and to draw a line and say that what is happening in our streets weekly, heavily armed masked agents who do not identify themselves, racial profile, come in unmarked cars, and families torn apart, is not who we are, and to pass a welcoming resolution that makes Montgomery County a place where immigrants can live, work, and raise their families without living in fear, because everybody deserves to feel like they belong somewhere. For me, that place has been Montgomery County. Let's make sure it stays that way for all of us. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
David Morgan?
David Morgan from Ambler, and I'm commenting about the American Delivery Night. I have some takeaways from that experience. I'm glad that Commissioner Winder could have it happen, and also Commissioner Majica could attend. Make sure your schedule, which are developed, but I found it very joyful and heartwarming, these births, and it was just good to know the positive things which were mentioned, like midwife help, as is mentioned in Africa, is very good to see, and that consider midwives and doulas, as our county has a Monco mamas program. I wish that could have been even more highlighted, but Monco mamas was mentioned at the very end, maternity care collision. And so, I think that's great, and the father's involvement. The fathers were really supportive during this time. The things I think that we could have our health department maybe give assistance is evaluating hospitals, because Penn Medicine's expert was saying that in New York City, some hospitals are not helpful in a woman's complete maternity care. So, how that's done, I'm sure Penn Medicine would be our resource, and that, I presume. And then also blood pressure cuffs for women discharged, that that could be offered to women, so that the county helps assist in that very life-saving sometimes measure. So, then, so those were really good takeaways to see from that film. Really well done. The other things that were maybe not mentioned were prenatal diet, vitamins, exercise, because we have sometimes sedentary lives, so to keep everyone ready for activity like birth. To mention, as Mr. Commissioner DeBello said, adoption day, consider adoption as part of birth. That's, there are law people who like to adopt a child. Parent and infant resource guide, also that we have in our county, which I've mentioned before, last couple of meetings or so, is great, resource, mentioning Pregnancy Resource Centers, so women can get help, if they know they have financial, emotional support that helps them have their child. So, that's great. I think that also, the concern I had, the film had a little bit about the kindness in terms of abortion, about 45 seconds, just showing a capital building about abortion measures. And I found abortion for our youngest humans a concern. So, I'm concerned about also what happened with the election, because I had received from Planned Parenthood this postcard, and I also read that there's funding from Planned Parenthood that's backing the Democratic candidates. But if you're someone who's independent or Republican, you give your tax my, almost $800,000, $800 million dollars, up to $800 million dollars in the Planned Parenthood annual report, that's for 402,000, 230 abortion services last year. So, for the youngest humans, for kindness, for our judges, that they have kindness, our commissioners consider these valuable lives, because the only Planned Parenthood adoption referrals were 2,000, the only prenatal care services were 7,000 compared to 402,000. I'd like to just encourage our kindness and help.
Thanks.
With this, our future is our children, and the youngest ones before birth. Great to see the ones making the cross the finish line, but once you're through the finish line, give them kindness. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Okay, we're moving on to Zoom. Michelle Engarto? Gardo, I'm sorry.
And if you can just say your name and municipality, that would be helpful.
Michelle, can you hear us?
Yes, yes. Can you hear me okay? Good afternoon. I'm Michelle Engarto from Lower Salford Township. I've been reviewing the preliminary election results, and a funny thing happened. Between 11:07 and today, the mail-in ballot numbers for Democrats are only moving upwards. Zero changes for Republicans and no at-pole corrections, just additional mail-in ballots being added to already bloated Democrat tallies. There are some facts about this election in Monco that should raise eyebrows. There's a clear pattern of Republicans winning local races at the polls by comfortable margins, only to have an avalanche of Democrat mail-in ballots for the results. This is especially suspicious in areas where Republicans have significant registered voter advantage. Here are three examples. In Soderston School District, Republicans have 5,135 more registered voters. At the poll, Republicans had a 28% or 1,567 vote lead. Democrats got 1,994 more mail-in ballots, or 1.8 times the Republicans. 36% of all Democrat ballots were by mail, and only 14% of Republican ballots were by mail. Democrats either had to have a 78% turnout, or 92.5% of all other registered voters going for Dems to achieve the results. Four Republican school board seats were flipped to Democrat, including the President and the Vice President. In Skip Act for Township Supervisor, Republicans have 711 more registered voters. At the poll, the Republicans had 20% lead, or 282 votes. Democrats got 664 more mail-in ballots, or 1.4x the amount Republicans did. 44% of all Democrat ballots were by mail, while 22% of Republican ballots were by mail. 55% turnout was reported. Democrats either had an 80% turnout, or 96% of all other registered voters were Democrats. Two Republican township supervisors lost their seats, including the chairman. And third, in Upper Park Yelman School Board Race, Republicans have 2,752 more registered voters than Democrats. And at the poll, Republicans had a 28% lead, or 1,567 votes. But Democrats got 1,994 more mail-in ballots, or 1.8x the amount Republicans did. As the reported 45% turnout, Democrats would have 2,224 votes, but they actually got 3,442. That suggests either they had a 70% turnout, or they got nearly all the other voters, plus some Republicans. Democrats only won by a 6% margin, or 206 votes. I recognize that these results are not impossible, but there's a consistent pattern of Democrats winning local races through disproportionate number of mail-in ballots, and the continued increasing numbers of mail-in ballot results for Democrats even eight days after the election, with no gains for Republicans, is highly suspicious. Thank you.
I'll just take that briefly. One, I'll just say, it is absolutely eyebrow-raising, and you are not wrong, and the turnout was extraordinary, and we're very proud of that, because people voted. In Montgomery County, 50% of people turned out. It's never happened before. There was also historic turnout in Bucks and Delco and Philly, different numbers, but ours especially, I think we shot to the top of the list in terms of turnout. Sometimes it used to be Chester, and this time it's Montgomery County. So, very eyebrow-raising, I think in a good way. In terms of the reason why maybe Republicans are not voting by mail, it could be because the President tells them not to. That would be my theory. I don't know if there's any other factors at play. But if you want to come see the audit results, we do two audits after every election. We make sure there's no discrepancies or fraud, and there's a recount. All the mail-ins are barcoded, and we track and make sure we receive only mail that we sent out. And of course, at the end of every election, everyone who voted is made public, and there's a record, so you can make sure there's no people who were counted, who didn't vote. But absolutely eyebrow-raising, so I agree with you.
Next up, Ed Engarto? Can you hear us? Ed, we need you to unmute. Okay, we're going to move on then to Flor Jasmine Danny?
I've unmuted. I think we're in good shape.
We can hear you.
So, on September 25th this year, at the Monco Commissioners Meeting, Commissioner Mckeja said that, quote, "Police chiefs don't want to be associated with what ICE is doing because immigrants no longer want to report crime, and that municipalities all across the country are making it clear that they're not participating in the actions that this administration is engaging in," end quote. And I'd like to just offer that there is some evidence to the contrary. Bucks County Sheriff Fred Heran signed the now-famous 287G Agreement, committing his resources to cooperate with ICE. Bucks County Commissioners attempted to block the sheriff from cooperating, and on October 14th, Judge Jeffrey Troger, hope I pronounced that right, ruled that this cooperation was, quote, "lawful, reasonable, and necessary to protect citizens and residents," end quote. This ruling should set a precedent for all Pennsylvania counties, especially since it was ruled not just lawful and reasonable, but actually necessary. Sheriff Heran not only did what was legal and necessary, but also what was right. He stood up and offered his cooperation with another law enforcement agency to protect citizens and legal residents of his county. Those who elected him are happy and proud that he is doing so. While I understand our commissioners' concern for possible harm due to possible future injustices, I chose that language intentionally. That was the language of the actual motion that was filed. This kind of speculation does not guarantee rights will be trampled, and a grieved party may always take his real, tangible evidentiary grievance to a court through the normal process. Our commissioners should not discourage sheriffs and the police force from doing a good job enforcing the law and protecting citizens from criminals. I hope that this ruling encourages our sheriff and our chiefs of police in Monco to enhance their cooperation with federal law enforcement. An elected sheriff's authority comes from the voters, and the sheriffs are accountable directly to the citizens and the law, not the county commissioners. It is important for Monco citizens to speak up and demand that law enforcement prioritize the safety of our communities over the political views judgment. Thank you.
Sure, I'll just say one thing briefly, which is, of course, the footnote of that is that the sheriff is no longer in office, and that issue was heavily litigated in his election, and he may need to go find a job with ICE. So, perhaps he'll go work with them. But in terms of the legal issue that you're speaking of, it's, I never actually said that there's no legal authority to work with ICE. People can work with ICE, but they also cannot be coerced into working with ICE. So, localities have the option to do what's best for our residents. Well, the dispute in Bucks was also whether the sheriff had the independent authority without the backing of the commissioners, who typically, we are the ones who sign agreements with third parties, even if those agreements relate to our row officers. So, slightly different issue, but, you know, I'll just say that there's no chance our sheriff is going to sign a 287G, and, you know, we've made our opinion clear on that.
Last place, Miss Flor Jasmine Danny on Zoom.
Thank you. I am also definitely in support of the welcoming ordinance to be passed, but today I actually would like to talk about something that I'm not sure has been addressed here before. I wasn't sure if Monco has ever considered doing some kind of non-emergency service system, similar to like the Philly 311. Recently, I was in a situation where I had to ask for help, but was not able to, or, but it wasn't something that was to the extent that I would normally like call the police for. And when I looked at, so I did end up calling 911. I reported what I saw. But when I ended up looking later on on the Monco website to try to figure out what the non-emergency numbers are, it was a bit confusing. And I just think that having something like that in Monco would be really beneficial, because if we do want to have our law enforcement be focused on actual crimes instead of anything that could possibly require assistance, I think that that would be something that we really would all benefit from. So, I really would like to ask if that's something that the commissioners have ever discussed, or if it's something that it's in the works that I just, I maybe don't know about, that I didn't find on the website. I would like some feedback on that, because I do think it is really important.
Sure. So, I believe this is in the works. If anyone wants to speak, please, you want to add anything for this?
We'll follow up.
We'll follow up with you. But now, you make a very-
I would really appreciate that. Yeah, I know that in Philly, it reduced the amount of calls that were being directed directly to the police stations, and I know that it really did build like a sense of trust and comfort for Philadelphians, because they knew that they had somewhere else to turn to, aside from just police, especially given like all the, you know, let's say, different opinions regarding, you know, police conduct and everything. But since 2008, it really, you know, it has really made a big difference in Philadelphia.
And this is, I missed a little bit of what you're saying. This is like 311, or not 311, or the other?
No, there have been, over the years, non-emergency numbers for calls that might otherwise go to 911.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that there was a whole list of them, but they like differ by like different sections of Monco. So, I was thinking that it might be good to have something that's a little bit more streamlined.
Yeah. Okay, we'll follow up with you, but we're thoroughly looking at how we can optimize both in our 911 centers, so that they can very efficiently, you know, sort and address things in priority, but also issues like the ones you're raising. So, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
All right. So, that is all of our public comments for today. Thank you, everyone, for weighing in, and thank you to our team on the budget. That's, yeah, I'll just reiterate, really great job across the board, very proud of where we've landed, especially considering where we began the year and the forecasts. And I'll turn it over to my colleagues for any closing comments.
I'm good.
Good? Got anything? All right. So, next time, we'll be here Thursday, December 4th, 10:00 a.m. and 5:30 p.m. in the boardroom, and then we'll also be back later today, December 18th, at 10:00 a.m. in the boardroom. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. And is there a motion to adjourn the November 13th, 2025 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners?
We'll move.
Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? All in favor? So, the meeting is adjourned. We'll briefly have a salary board meeting. Our Controller, Bob Hart, will join us. Okay. Any public comments on the salary board?
David Morgan?
Briefly, David Morgan of Ambler, I'd just like to mention that during the financial report, elimination of positions was mentioned, and I was just encouraging the commissioners to consider merging positions to save on costs, because we often have seen the list of new positions which might be over budget, as in the beginning of the year, many of them. I've shown you that list. So, perhaps with retirements, that merging can happen, because Bucks County has been looking to that in statements in the press. Thank you. Have a nice Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Great. So, salary board, Tony Brew?
Good afternoon, members of the salary board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the salary board list. There's a five-page document dated November 12th, 2025, with a timestamp of 9:45 a.m. All business have been reviewed and accounted for, for your consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the November 13th, 2025 salary board presentation as presented by Mr. Tony Brew, Chief Human Resources Officer?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Controller Hart. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn the November 13th, 2025 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.
You want to stay longer?
Yeah.